Thank you, Councilmember Toy. Good evening, welcome to the 1,916th regular meeting of the City Council. This is a voting meeting. The minute this meeting will be approved is the next regular meeting scheduled to be held on Monday, March 22, 2021. Madam Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Councilmember Toy?
Here.
Vice President Barr?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember McCullough?
Here, Livonia, Michigan.
Oh.
Oh, Livonia, Michigan. Oh, thank you, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Council, Vice President Barr?
In Livonia, Michigan.
Okay, so we got Councilmember White?
Mackinac Island, Michigan.
Councilmember McCullough?
Here, Livonia, Michigan.
Councilmember Donavick?
Here, gone on military duty.
Councilmember Jolly?
President, Livonia, Michigan.
President McIntyre?
Here, Livonia, Michigan. Thank you, Madam Clerk, we have all members of the council with us this evening. At this time, we have the presentation of the minutes for the 1,915th regular meeting of the City Council that was held on February 22, 2021. Council?
Move to approve.
Move to approve from Councilmember Jolly?
Support.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Toy. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February 22, 2021?
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the minutes are approved unanimously. At this time, we go to council personal announcements, tributes or recognition. I have just a few to, a few things to mention before I go to my colleagues. We do have new data on item number 16, I'll refer specifically to that data when we get to item number 16. This time, I'm going to ask Councilmember Jolly, he has a list of our, of the City of Livonia retirees for the month of February.
I'll have them in one moment.
Pardon me?
Give me a minute, so I can pull them up.
Okay. While you're doing that, I'll go on to the next announcement. March 20, we have a happy birthday to wish to Mr. Doug Moore, Assistant Director of Public Works. And not only does Mr. Moore, like all of our department heads and our assistant department heads and employees, do an outstanding job, Doug Moore is one of the nicest people that you would ever want to encounter, and he gets more phone calls in a day than a lot of people probably get in a year. And the feedback that I always get is how nice Doug is to everyone. So, happy birthday Doug, we hope you can enjoy your day and celebrate with your lovely family. Councilmember Jolly, do you have the retirees?
I do, thank you, Madam President. So, as the retirement board representative from the City Council, it's my pleasure to congratulate our recent retirees. We have Joseph Robertson, Senior Police Officer, who has served the City of Livonia for 25 years, and Catherine Leach, Library Two, from the Civic Center Library, who has retired with 14 years of service. So, we thank them very much for their service, they've made our city a greater place and have been a joy to work with, we wish them well in retirement, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jolly. At this time, it's my pleasure and privilege to announce our department heads, and as I say every week when we're on Zoom, this is in no particular order, I'm, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped right over the rest of council, Councilmember Donavick. We got a little out of order tonight, so, my apologies.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to recognize a WWII veteran who turned 100 years old. I was reading The Observer on, online, and I read the story about Joseph Girolaro, who has been a Livonia resident for some 60-plus years, served in France, Italy, and Africa. He's got a really awesome story, came home from the war and worked for Ford, has a beautiful family, and had a celebration, celebrating his 100th birthday a few days ago. So, Mr. Girolaro, he made it up to E6 Staff Sergeant, which is pretty high in the listed ranks, so, congratulations, sir, and happy 100th birthday. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Donavick, I'm glad you mentioned that, I had a note about that if no one did, he's an exceptional, exceptional person and patriot, he's been, he was a fixture for many, many years at our Memorial Day celebrations, and also at most Eagle Scout ceremonies in the city, and he's, we owe him a debt of gratitude, our community does, and our country does, and on top of that, as Councilmember Donavick said, he's just, he's a remarkable man with a remarkable story, so, happy birthday, Sergeant. Councilmember McCullough?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a few notes, one, I just want to, and I'm sure I speak on behalf of a lot of us, but, vaccinate Livonia, hats off to everybody involved. Again, I think you could, being from a, working in a neighboring community, who have tried to replicate the rollout, everybody from Livonia Fire, Livonia Cert, Livonia Staff, anybody that's part of this, kudos and hats off, I mean, it's, what a great feeling, I know some of us did volunteer at the, at the senior center, and seeing some of the faces of people, I know everybody would say it's almost like winning the lottery, so, that, if you could bottle that up, and hopefully that's things to come, wonderful job, so, hats off, congratulations, keep up the great work. Next thing, I know Councilmember Donavick and myself are the chairs on the Healthy Livonia Committee, and we just kicked off the Under Days of Health, and for more information, if you're friends on Facebook, look up Healthy Livonia, or at the Rec Center, there's a pretty big spread, right as you're walking into the Rec Center with all the information, that goes through June 6, and more benefits of keeping our city healthy. And then, the last note I have, I did catch wind that the Friends Bookstore at the library reopens tomorrow for select hours, so, if you haven't seen that, check out the Livonia Library website, and please check them out. That's it, thanks, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember McCullough. Councilmember Toy?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, I also wanted to mention, for our veteran that's 100 years old tomorrow, he is a member of the Italian American Club as well, so I hope that blood passes amongst a lot of good Italians, just a wonderful tribute that we gave to him just now, it's always nice to send a little tribute from us and the mayor, and, you know, people do appreciate that, even or not hang it in their living room sometimes even, so, you know, it's, it's very heartwarming, but I also wanted to mention, we have a fellow Livonian, and I don't have my TV on, but I know she's on Jeopardy right now, her name is also Laura, and she did a super job Friday, and I'm hoping she's doing a great job now, she went to Churchill High School, and I'm very proud to hear Livonia passed upon all those areas, and the other evening, I was watching this movie called Good Girls, and Livonia was mentioned there as well, in season two, I think it was the third one, under season two on Netflix, and they talked about Livonia, Michigan as well, so, we're getting such notoriety, kudos to the mayor and her staff for getting that PR out there, it's been great, and I just wanted to say happy spring to everyone as well, and don't forget to turn back your clocks on Sunday, or is it Saturday night? It's one of those two days, just turn them back real quick, yeah. No, it's spring up, spring up, Madam.
Yeah, I believe it's Saturday night, and, so you don't, then you'll be too late.
Thank you so much, bye-bye.
Thank you, Councilmember Toy. Anyone else on council have any announcements they'd like to make? All right, at this time, I will move ahead with introduction of our department heads. We have, first, we will recognize our mayor, Maureen Miller-Brosman, thank you for joining us this evening, Mayor. We have Mr. Paul Burnier, our City Attorney, we have our City Clerk, Susan Nash, we have our Manager of Council Office and the Council Business, Sarah Casperwich, we have LaShawn Thomas, our Director of Governmental Affairs, we have Mr. Mark Teramina, our Director of Planning and Economic Development, we have Mr. Todd Zalinsik, our City Engineer, and now bear with me when I switch over to my other screen, we have Police Chief Curtis Cade with us, Fire Chief, and I should say Livonia Police Department Chief Curtis Cade, Livonia Fire Department Chief David Hebner, our Director of Administrative Services, Dave Varga, I see that we have former Mayor Jack Anger-Bretson with us this evening, our City Treasurer Linda Shield, and I think I covered all of the department heads, I hope I did. Anyway, thank you, all of you, for your work and for being with us this evening. I do not have any specific announcements this evening, but at this time, we go to reports from the mayor and other city officials, and the mayor would like to provide an update to the council and to Livonia on the Healthy Livonia Vaccine, or Vaccinate Livonia Program. Mayor?
Thanks, Madam Chair, I really do appreciate this, and before we dive into that, just know that I did get a chance on behalf of the city to participate in the American Legion Celebration of Joe DiRallo's 100th Birthday, so, I was able to extend greetings on behalf of all of you to him and his family, and it really was quite an event, so, thank you for recognizing him tonight at your meeting as well. So, my purpose tonight is to talk to you and kind of fill you in on where we're at with our COVID vaccination program. You know, three weeks ago, the City of Livonia launched a mobile effort to vaccinate the most at-risk population that we have in our community, and those were our senior citizens who are living in congregant care facilities, Silver Village, New Bird Village, Rashir Towers, Mac Towers, a whole host of seniors, roughly about 1,200 of them. And this was the first mobile vaccination effort that has been launched in the region, and quite possibly the state, because the day that we launched it was the day that approval was given to have mobile vaccination units. So, we were able to vaccinate successfully 600 seniors, those were people that really wanted the vaccine, many, some people had gotten it already through other resources, but these were 600 people that were not going to be getting a vaccine anywhere else, that really were going to fall through the cracks. And vaccines for those folks were provided by St. Mary Mercy Hospital, as well as Wayne County, and I think I told you last week, a really huge lift by our Wayne County Commissioner, Terry Morecki, in working with the Wayne County Executive to make sure that we got vaccines for that most vulnerable population. So, the exciting thing was that when we went in and we did that, it was kind of a proof that we were capable of managing an individual vaccination project, so the county then turned around and entrusted us with enough vaccine to vaccinate another 5,500 Livonia residents, age 65 and older. But we spent the better part of the last two weeks doing exactly that, and again, Livonia was a standout, stand-up community in providing this service. Residents were being vaccinated so fast that we began to call this a shot-a-minute clinic, and we were vaccinating roughly 500 people a day with a combined effort of so many of our departments, and I know I talk to you about this a lot, about breaking down the silos of government, and this was really a fantastic example of that. The effort is led by our Emergency Management Director, Brian Kahn, but then immediately there is a team of people that then gets assembled to assist in the day-to-day operations, with Chief Hebner really taking the lead in the operations, and Brandy Isaacson over in the Housing Department, making sure that we, we know that population, and we get in touch with the population most in need of being vaccinated, and then standing up the effort is Ted Davis and his team over at Department of Parks and Recreation, handling all of the communication side of it, the registration side of it, again, we relied on our Parks and Rec Department and some of the registration software that we already had in place, and then we were able to repurpose for this effort. So, that was an exciting thing to be able to do, to know that we could manage the volume of inquiries and calls and need for vaccines and appointment times using a system that we already had in place, so that was really exciting. So, we pulled together a team of people from the mayor's office, from Parks and Recreation, from Community Resources, to put together a call center, where we actually installed a hotline, so that people who were not computer savvy or tech savvy could call in to schedule appointments, but most of our people did, 70% of the people, did register online, because that provided them, you know, 24/7 access to the opportunity to get in line for a vaccine. Vaccines were administered by our Fire Department, by our firefighters, who are all trained paramedics, so that made it an exceptionally productive way of delivering the vaccine, and everybody loves our firefighters, so, people came in really confident that things were being done well and being done right. And then, we also had an EMS unit onsite, ready, in the event that somebody did have an adverse reaction to the vaccine. Crowds for this operation were managed by our Community Emergency Response Team, you know, this is a team of people that train all year long for major events and administering and working with people in large crowds, and this was really the perfect opportunity to utilize their skills and talents, but I don't want to underestimate the amount of time that they dedicated to this. And this was an amazingly intense effort, you know, that started every morning around 8:30 and didn't end until 5:30, 6 o'clock at night, five, sometimes six days a week, so it really was a huge undertaking by those volunteers. As I indicated, the hotline got set up, and that doesn't just happen, the backend of the computer system doesn't just happen, this is where we really rely on the expertise of our Information Technology Department, to make sure that we don't crash our phone system, to make sure that we don't crash our internet system, and making sure that everything stays functioning. So, just by way of volume, to help you understand, the hotline, we spoke with 2,000 residents in the first day, and we were scheduling roughly 15 appointments a minute at that time, with all of our people that were online, so, and we were roughly scheduling 700 appointments within an hour, and just really processing things extremely, extremely fast through the course of all this. So, I wanted to take a second to explain all of that to you, explain it to the community, I want to thank all of you who took the time, made the time to come by and help out and fill in. We had help from our Clerk's Office, we had help from our Treasurer's Office in manning the phones and in making some of these phone calls, so, depart, other elected offices certainly came to the rescue to help get this effort off the ground, and I know that each of you joined us in support of this effort, and whether you were able to make it out to the site, or you helped to promote it on social media, or you helped to make some calls and to help us to find the 65 and older seniors that needed it, all of you played a big part in making this a big success. So, I wanted to share that with you, and also to let you know, along the lines of Councilmember McCullough's comments, there were a number of communities that stopped by to take a look at what the City of Livonia was doing. We had Redford Inn, we had Plymouth, we had Canton, we had Westland, we had Northville, we had a city out in Nevada that happened to be in town that wanted to swing by and see how we were doing it, and we really did set the pace for what could be done. And our purpose in extending the offer to neighboring communities to come and see how we operated was that we really do believe that we need all boats to rise in order for us to move on and get to that point where we can begin to vaccinate the general population, so, you know, we need to put some, you know, some real effort behind getting our seniors vaccinated, so we can move on to that next group of people. So, I wanted to talk just a little, spend some, just a bit of time talking about what's next. So, this week, for example, we go back out into the field, back to where we had our mobile units operating, to deliver the second round of the vaccine. We've been delivering the Pfizer vaccine for the most part, and we did have a small amount of Moderna that we will, on a separate schedule, rotate back and give the second dose for roughly about 60 to 70 people that we gave Moderna vaccines to, but for the most part, it's Pfizer. So, that means that this week, we go back to all of our seniors, our most vulnerable seniors, and we vaccinate them right on their doorstep, we come knocking right on their apartment door, or they come down to the community center in their apartment complex, and they're vaccinated in a really easy fashion, and the goal here is to make sure that all of those second rounds get completed this week. Then, we go back into the rotation again for the following two weeks, to make sure that everybody who got that first dose of vaccine, it's the second dose. So, what we did was, we told everybody, just come back same time, three weeks from now, same day, if you were a Wednesday at 1 o'clock, you're Wednesday at 1 o'clock, three weeks from your appointment, so, we're able to give all of those second vaccines. You may have heard today that the county did authorize the administration of vaccines to residents over 50 years old who have underlying health conditions. At this point, the county has not yet said what kind of supply of vaccine is available, nor have they indicated that we are going to be allowed to continue to provide the vaccine, so all of those details need to be worked out. So, what we are encouraging Livonia residents to do is to go to the website that we've set up, so that they can register for an account with our Civic Rec System, so that if an announcement is made that vaccines are going to be available, we can then email them, and they can at least get on a list to know if and when vaccines are going to be administered on a local basis. The email is www.livonia.gov, and right at the top of the screen, there is a direct link to our Vaccinate Livonia site, and that, if you want to go directly there, is simple, it's www.vaccinatelivonia.org. We will, of course, distribute information on available vaccines using our social media outlets, using any of the email outlets that we've already developed within our community, word of mouth, obviously, will be a big way of letting people know, but not the one we rely on predominantly. We are also going to make sure that we have residents, give them links to other vaccine sites, so if you go to the Vaccinate Livonia site, there is a whole host of links to Rite Aid, to Walgreens, to healthcare agencies and organizations, so if you wish to get in line there as well, there are direct computer links in order to do that and to make that process a little bit easier. We will for sure keep all of you posted on where we're going, where we're headed next, what our opportunities are, there's been great success with the program as it's been administered so far, I know you all have heard the stories, you've all gotten, you know, the emails and the phone calls from people indicating how grateful they were that their city was able to do this, but we couldn't have done it without the City Council's support and your trust and faith that we were, we were capable of doing this job, so, I wanted to be sure to share the good news story with you, also just to remind people in the public that as we become a more vaccinated community, it doesn't mean that we're going to be able to put the masks down yet, that we're going to be able to put the hand sanitizing and hand washing down yet, that we're going to be able to, you know, get closer, we're still going to have to maintain our social distances, this is going to go on for a while, but I do believe that all of us pulling together the way that we did with the vaccination clinic is going to be the answer, and it'll be the way that we most quickly are able to get back to normal. So, I thank you for your indulgence this evening in giving me a brief amount of time to explain where it is and what we've been able to accomplish. If you have any questions, I'm here for that.
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate all the thank yous you gave, I would like to call out one additional person, and that's Cheryl Nadratowski, who runs our CERT program, and Cheryl works for the Police Department, but as someone who runs the CERT, as you know, she puts in countless hours of volunteer time, and when I was over there, Cheryl was clearly one of the people in charge, and not only was she, and with great assistance from our city employees and from all of the CERT team, but managing a line, because as soon as, as all of us who were over there know, as soon as we would get close to the next batch of people, because it was done in half-hour, half-hour blocks, which was excellent, but the line would form, and Cheryl had on the vest, and clearly, her demeanor, and everyone knew she was in charge, she would get literally pulled by people who had questions, they had wanted their 64-year-old wife to get vaccinated, who's there, I mean, she was pulled in so many directions, and, you know, as any of us who know her, she's just outstanding, she manages the CERT team, she answers everyone, she keeps her cool, so, you know, just another example of great leadership from our team. Anyone else? Councilmember Toy?
Thank you, Madam Chair, just like to chime in and say, Livonia was truly a shining example for the organization that was lent to this, and, I mean, it's just outstanding how smoothly it ran, and kudos go to, as the mayor said, everyone that's been involved, and I know that the hard work, all those people, that they could open a doctor's office at this stage because of how they shuffled people through there safely and efficiently, and we should all be very, very proud of that, and your leadership, Mayor, and others, honestly, thank you from the bottom of my heart, as one that has a lot of allergies to different things, it's miraculous how well you guys did, thank you again.
Outstanding, Mayor, thank you. All right, thank you very much, Mayor, for, again, your leadership on this and all of your time tonight to make sure that we and everyone in the community were updated on this enormous undertaking, enormous and successful, thank you very much. All right, that is the only report we have this evening from city officials, at this time, we will move on to audience communication, and I'm going to ask our council parliamentarian, the Honorable Kathy White, if she would please go through our rules for audience communication.
Thank you, Madam President. So, the rules are as follows, members of the public audience at the meeting shall not speak until they are recognized by the chair. Each person recognized by the chair to address the council shall identify himself or herself by name and, if appropriate, group affiliation. A person addressing council on an item on the agenda shall be limited to two minutes, unless the period of time is extended by a majority of the council present, and shall be recognized to speak prior to council's consideration of the item. There will be an audience communication section of not more than 30 minutes duration at the beginning of all council regular and study meetings where citizens may address the council. There will also be an audience communication section at the end of all regular and study council meetings where citizens may address the council on any matter that is not on the agenda of that meeting. Citizens who wish to expand upon their remarks will be asked to reduce the matter to writing and submit it to the city clerk, and such item may be placed on a future council study session for further consideration. A person addressing council under the audience communication portion of the agenda will be limited to a total of three minutes at each study and/or regular meeting unless the period of time is extended by a majority of the council present. A citizen may address the council once during audience communication. If the citizen has addressed the council during the first audience communication section at the beginning of the meeting, the citizen will not be permitted to address the council again during any audience communication period at the end of the meeting. Anyone addressing the council shall make responsible comments. Personal, impertinent, slanderous, or profane remarks are not permitted, and anyone causing a breach of the peace may be removed from the council meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Councilmember White, so this time, I will go to our audience, see if anyone would like to address the council on any item out on this evening's agenda, and the time is now 7:28, so we would set aside 30 minutes for this. And I see no members of the audience who would like to address the, okay, now I see two, three, all right. We will begin with Carol, and just a reminder, we will ask you, please, give us your, your full name and your address, so we know who's addressing the council, and that you can be identified in the minutes, all right. Good evening, and you should be able to unmute yourself. Carol, if you're on, if you're joining us on phone, it's star six. Carol, are you able to unmute yourself or hit star six? All right, we'll circle back to, we'll circle back to Carol, and we will go to Tracy Harvey. All right, Ms. Harvey, you should, I think, be able to, you should be able to address the council, good evening.
Hello, my name is Tracy Harvey, and I live at 20041 in Tigo, and we have an Airbnb or boarding house next door to us, and on February 28, we had a drive-by shooting of three bullets, the police were involved. This house is not safe for our neighborhood, it is not safe for our children, the neighbors are concerned about this house, the police have been called on multiple times, they have late hours, there are fighting and screaming that go- There are fighting and screaming that goes on constantly over there. I personally have been verbally assaulted three times by the tenants that stay there. And the neighbors in my community are very concerned about the safety issues that go on in that neighborhood because of this house. The address to that house is 2009, 29 Antigo. And we are concerned about what's going on. And I have another neighbor here with me. Her name is Julie, and she would like to speak.
All right. Well, I'm going to need to circle back to you because I need to go back to Carol, and then I will circle back to you so Julie can speak. All right?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Good evening. Carol. Let's see if we can, if you're able to join us this time. There we go. Good evening. Carol, you should be able to address the council. And it says, it's a star six on your phone. All right. Well, we will go on to Eric, and then we will try to circle back to Carol so she can address the council. All right. Good evening. Eric?
Hi. Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. My name's Eric Masters. I live at 20114 Antigo. We are also another concerned neighbor from the neighborhood. We've lived here for about 15 years now. And I feel that, you know, this house probably started doing this Airbnb stuff around, I don't know, it's been going on for a year or two now. And again, we've seen, you know, people up and down the street. I've had a guy pass out in my front yard during the beginning of COVID, start foaming from his mouth. Clearly, it was a drug overdose, which, again, we kind of, not knowing what was going on initially, we kind of confused it for, you know, but we didn't know what was going on. But we've seen fights occur at this house. Most recently, my wife and I were trying to enjoy a peaceful evening, and about 6 o'clock, we heard three gunshots fire off, which, you know, we shouldn't have to tolerate. And, you know, this, we're coming here tonight to address the council because we feel that it's a, it's a safety issue to have a, I think they've got something like six rooms in this house that they rent out. And it's, from what I understand, like you can even rent a couch in this house. You know, this, this is a residential neighborhood. It's not a, you know, we're not a place to have a hotel where, you know, drug addicts and, you know, people can come and fornicate. You know, they're basically running a flop house over here. And, you know, we've, I mean, I've seen hookers walk in and out of there. And I mean, this is not, you know, we can stay silent for only so long. It's, it's, you know, we call the police, we, you know, there, there are numerous, numerous times. I'm sure if you talk to the chief, they'll, they'll let you know that this is no, you know, this isn't unusual to have, you know, to have police presence in the area because of this, this particular home. So we're just hoping by speaking to you guys this evening that you'll consider, you know, raising something to where, you know, where we can have, you know, our residential neighborhood be a residential neighborhood and not, you know, be run like a hotel where, you know, people can just, you know, come and stay for a night and, you know, get, you know, messed up and cause a scene and, and, you know, go on with their lives. You know, we're, you know, we've got a pretty nice neighborhood here. All of our neighbors look out for each other pretty well. And then we have this particular house. And it's my understanding, there's another one in the neighborhood as well that I've talked to some of our other, our other neighbors in the neighborhood who, you know, state that kind of the same things are going on in that location as well. It just, there's got to be something we can do to prevent...
Time is up, Madam Chair. The time... Thank you. And, and we appreciate that you're not staying silent on this. Before we, I think there are some others that want to communicate. Vice President Barr has his hand up. So Vice President Barr, would you like to address this now or wait until...
I was going to address it now unless we know that the next person's speaking of the same thing. I could wait, but I guess, what do you prefer?
Why don't we go on and see if the next person is on the same issue? And if, if so, then, okay. We have phone number, number ending in 7673.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi. This is not in relation to the prior conversation.
Okay. Then, and I promise you, you'll get your time to speak. We wanted to go through the Airbnb issue first. And if you can just hang with us, we will come back to you, I promise.
Thank you so much. I will.
All right. Next, we'll go on to Brian. Good evening, Brian.
Good evening. I'm Brian Masters. I live at 20128 Antigo. I have the same concerns as the rest of my neighbors about this hotel being in the neighborhood. And I just wanted to let you know that I have the same feelings. I don't, I just don't know what we're supposed to do from this point. Any input would be terrific. Obviously, we've had contact with the police, but I've filed a complaint with code enforcement because I feel that they're not, you know, zoned properly to have this trap house going on kind of thing. And I have filed a review on Google for that hotel, which my review has been since removed. But I basically was trying to let people know that there was a shooting that occurred there. And just want you guys to know that this is unacceptable. And that, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for, thank you for being with us tonight and sharing this information with us. And we're going to go back to Tracy Harvey because she has a neighbor with her. Let's see. There we go. All right.
Good evening. My name is Julie Bateman. I live at 20019 Antigo, which is just as close to this thing. I married Livonia 30 years ago. And when we got divorced, I stayed in Livonia because I love this city. I have seen a lot of changes. Remind you guys, I can tell you stories. I live in a two-story house, a house away from it. I'm not going to tell you stories. I'm going to tell you how this neighborhood is changing. We're getting younger families back in here. We have kids on our street now again. It's awesome to see it changing and growing. Like I said, the divorce didn't stop me. I stayed in Livonia, and I stayed in my home. But this house is really dragging down what we're trying to do. You can go over Inkster and four blocks in, and now you're in the same spot that we're starting to be put in because of this. I love my neighborhood. My neighbor between that house and mine is elderly, and he is scared in his house because of the people he sees coming in and out. The police told me that she is not licensed. And I did talk to the law division about this extensively. And I was told that until somebody, until somebody's prosecuted or somebody gets arrested or something, their hands are tied, and I appreciate that. But you guys, and Ms. Toy, I've known you for years through Girl Scouts. I know you love this city. This has just been a crazy time, and there's more of these popping up. It's $30 a night. What are you getting for $30 a night? You're getting people that don't care about the house. The owner does not care about this house, and they don't care about their neighbors. And it's sad to think that we have to be stuck when we're trying to improve our neighborhood and our city, and these people are coming in and just making us backpedal because now we're worrying about this. Those gunshots shells were found in front of my house. I stood there that night, and I wanted to cry because it should never have come down to this. I hope you guys can look into this B&amp;B. I hope you look into other B&amp;Bs that are popping up in Livonia. Yes, we live in the older part of Livonia. I know that. But the older part of Livonia is what started the bigger part of Livonia. Everybody, they don't want to leave. They stay, they move on, they go on to the bigger side. This is the way Livonia's always been. This is just sad that now they're starting to creep in into our borders and put us at fear. So I appreciate, like I said, I could tell you stories. I live close enough to it. They knock on my door thinking that it's my house. It's not that big of a house. It's probably a little over 1,000 square feet. They've divided bedrooms so that they can get $60 a night instead of just 30. It's unsafe. The people, some of them are really nice people that come here thinking that they're going to stay a night. And they end up fighting with the residents who have been here for three, four, or five weeks. And it's sad that good people are trying to stay there with good intentions and having to put up with the bad people. I hope you guys look into this, put some ordinance. It's a single, it's a single-family resident. How can you not live there? Mind you, she lives in Bloomfield. I miss up.
Thank you. Julie, thank you very much. And I know Mr. Barr wants to address this, but I do want to say one thing. It doesn't matter what part of Livonia you live in. Everyone in the city deserves and expects that they're going to live in a safe, a safe neighborhood and with strong community and not have to tolerate these kinds of things. So we really appreciate everyone taking the time to call in. 7673, I think you're going to talk to us about another subject. So if you would just, again, bear with us, Vice President Barr would like to address the comments that we've just heard.
Yeah. Thanks, President McIntyre. And I certainly want to lend my support to your comments there, there at the end there. But thanks to all the residents who've called in tonight. Thanks to the residents who've emailed. I know I've communicated with some of you. And thanks, thanks for bringing this to our attention. And the truth is that about a year ago, we spent a lot of time looking into this, the issue of short-term rentals in the city, Airbnb being the brand name that many would recognize, and, and what makes sense from an ordinance perspective. Because this is one of those examples of a, of a new economy that didn't exist when our ordinances were first written. And the truth is that we have draft language that we've reviewed at length that's, that's ready to go for a vote. And the only reason it has been brought up, and I'm just being totally honest with you, is because right when we were ready to bring it up is when the COVID thing hit, and we went virtual. And because we had spent so much time on that and because there was interest in it, we, we held it at that time thinking we'd only be doing virtual for a few weeks, and we were going to hold it till we could be back in person. And I'll just speak for myself. I won't speak for anybody else, although I haven't heard anybody else bring it up in the last 12 months, so I doubt I'm alone on this. I think it just slipped off the radar. And this has certainly put it back on the radar. And President McIntyre, I think it would be, I think it would behoove us to bring that up as soon as possible and revisit that because we have the, we have the language ready to go. To be, I'll have to review exactly what that language says. I can just go off memory. Remember, it was at a point that I was comfortable with it. So, so to all the neighbors, there, there, now, as far as the type of activity going on there, you're already talking to the police. One of you mentioned you've already contacted inspection. Somebody said you've already contacted law. You're hitting all the right things. I, I noticed the mayor was writing as you were talking. I'm guessing she was taking notes too. So the right people are hearing from an administrative standpoint, and you're, you're talking to the right people. But from an ordinance perspective, from a lawmaking perspective, there is, there are some things we can do, and it is time that we, that we take action on that. One final thing, I just want to encourage all you, and particularly the, I mean, all of you, but the last woman that spoke really encapsulated what I was planning to say anyway. I want to applaud all of you and encourage all of you for your, the force that you have in that neighborhood. The, the strength of any neighborhood is people like you. And the strength of Livonia is people like you that make strong neighborhoods, that make a strong city. And I just want to encourage all you, continue working together, continue talking to each other, continue to hold strong. Our entire city appreciates your commitment to doing that. And we'll, we'll see what we can do in pretty short order here from an ordinance perspective with this. So, thanks.
Thank you, Vice President Barr. Councilmember Donovan.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to sort of echo Vice President Barr's comments. I had emailed back and forth with a different, a couple of different residents about this issue. And I'm happy that the residents ended up getting on here and voicing their concerns. You have everybody in the city that makes these sorts of decisions are here. Paul Burner, City Attorney, our mayor, the chief of council, everyone is listening. And like Vice President Barr said, this topic was brought up, and, and we are where we are today. Ultimately, I think we need to hold, of course, the people that are committing these acts accountable, but that is hard. They are transient, they come and go. But really, it's the owners of the home. And I don't necessarily have a problem with Airbnb. I've used Airbnb, and like one of the residents said, there's some really nice people that utilize Airbnb. It can be a great resource, a great idea for someone staying the night or a few nights transient. But when you start to get issues like this, and the owner of the home isn't doing anything. And let's face it, you know, the owners know what's going on at this point, and they're not doing anything. Those are the individuals that need to be held accountable because we need to look after the residents that are living here long-term because nobody deserves to have gunshots in their front lawn. So the residents that are doing this, I'm sorry. And I know city council is going to be working hard on this, and so will the mayor's administration. And I look forward to hopefully solving this issue for you as a city. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Donovan. Councilmember Toy.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Thank you, Councilman Barr, for bringing it up because my mind, it slipped my mind too. I thought the ordinance was in place. Thinking, well, there's rules, there's no ordinance in place. But as you pointed out, no, we didn't have done with it real quick. So in light of that, Madam Chair, I would, I would request, as one council member, and I'm sure there's others, once we get this on the agenda pretty quick here, because I know you're very concerned about this as well. Nobody should have to live in a neighborhood that has gunshots going off and various things like that going on, that we invoke an emergency clause so we can do this as quickly as possible. We have that ability as a body. And I think it would behoove us to help, help out the situation, if we may, Madam Chair. So just a strong suggestion on that. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. If you would indulge me for a moment, can I ask a question to Mr. Burner?
Certainly.
Mr. Burner, my understanding was that the draft language was ready to go and come before us for a vote. Is that correct? Or if not, can you give us an update, please?
Well, may I apologize. I wasn't expecting this. But my memory of it is, is we did an ordinance at council's request. And then we had various hearings. I think we had a committee of a whole meeting on it. We may have had a study meeting. We had several meetings on it. And council requested that we make amendments or changes to it. So we presented a second version of an ordinance to council. Quite frankly, and quite frankly, I thought it was going to come to a, to a meeting and be voted. And then I don't remember the exact details on why. I remember that there were some real estate agents that showed up at the meeting and complained about the ordinance. And at that point in time, for whatever reason, it didn't get voted on. And I apologize. I didn't look at the notes because I didn't know that this was going to be coming up. But that's my memory of it.
Thank you, Mr. Burner. With that update from Mr. Burner, if my memory serves me correctly, I believe that we can go and have this on a regular meeting at this point. I would encourage us to do so. I think it's fine and well to promote business in our community and be good business partners. But I think it's very important that we stay true to who we are and be a family-first community that we have been over these years. And quite frankly, to serve these people in this neighborhood and everyone in the, in the city who lives here, it's important that we do this and take it up because this will continue to become a bigger problem as time goes on. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jolly. So to everyone who spoke, and again, you've heard what everyone has had to say. And Mr. Barr put it very, very well, that the strength of our city are our neighborhoods, and the strength of our neighborhoods are people like the residents who took the time to be at the meeting tonight, but also have been taking the time to call many of us, to email us, to call the attorney, to call inspection. And we can't, we, and this unfortunately was, was a potentially tragic situation with the shooting. But it's, it's very important that you, that you make your voices heard and that we know, that we're very clear and we know what needs to be addressed. Because if we don't know, we can't address it. And I think you've heard that we're all prepared to do that and have done a lot of work. So stay tuned, and I believe you will see this on an agenda, that the new ordinance language that we have in short order. So thank you. And at this time, we will go to phone, last four digits, phone number 7673. Thank you very much for your patience. Good evening. Let's see.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can.
Hi, thank you so much. My name is Carol McKee. I live at 28984 Westfield Street, Livonia, Michigan, 48150. And I, I am so sorry to hear about that previous topic. That is shocking to me. I am not from this area, but I have lived here for 19 years. And yes, so it's definitely something that needs to be addressed. But my topic, which will probably not seem as critical as to that, is with regard to the Beagles that we've been monitoring over the past couple of weeks. We're just interested to hear if there's any status update, if you can share with us what's been going on, what we can expect over the next couple of weeks.
This was referred, this item was referred to the administration, I think specifically with the Law Department at our last meeting, to draft ordinance language. And we are waiting for a language from the Law Department. They are working on it. And every issue that comes before council is important. So every, every, any issue that's important to a resident is important to the council. And, you know, thank you for, for your sensitivity to the seriousness of the other issue and that human lives are involved. But we took the other area issue seriously and we had a resolution offered for referral. So stay tuned to our agendas. And the Law Department is short-staffed right now. They're working very hard on all of the issues before them. They have some other ordinance language to write. But as soon as they are able to produce language, ordinance language for us, it will be on an agenda.
Thank you so much. And just to reiterate Ms. Toy's words, we would like to be a shining example too for these Beagles in Livonia. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you so much for taking the time to call us tonight. All right, last call for audience communication. Seeing none, we will move ahead with our agenda. And we move on to our consent agenda. This evening, items one through 15 are listed on the consent agenda. They are voted on as one item. It does not mean that they are any less important than any other items that are in tonight's agenda. But rather, when we discussed them and reviewed them at the February 22nd study meeting, they were deemed not to be controversial in nature. And council members may ask for things to be placed on the consent agenda in order to be voted on as one item. If anyone on the council objects to having something placed on the consent agenda and wants it on the regular agenda, then it's placed on the regular agenda. So these items one through 15 tonight were deemed not to be controversial. Council.
Madam President.
Councilmember Jolly.
I'll offer an approving resolution for the consent agenda.
Support from.
I'll support.
Support from Councilmember McCullough. Clerk, would, would you?
Madam Chair, if you'd just indulge me one moment. Item number seven on your consent agenda is the approval of the Livonia Command Officers Agreement. And I just want to take a moment to kind of bring full circle for all of you, the fact this is an important moment.
Mayor, Mayor, point of order, I don't, we, we don't have discussion, I don't believe, on consent agenda.
Oh, I thought there was.
Would you like us to take it off? Would, would you like us to take it off the consent agenda?
If you don't mind, it, it probably is worthy of a couple of words.
All right, would someone like to?
Madam President, for, for easiness sake here, I will amend my motion to approve the consent agenda absent number seven.
Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk, would you please take the, the vote on approval of the consent agenda amended by the maker to remove number seven?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilmember Toy.
But make sure your supporter is in agreement with that, that's all.
The supporter agrees, thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
Sorry, I just wanted to make sure we're doing things correctly here. Can we pass number eight without passing number seven? I guess through the chair to the law, if I may?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that you asked.
We did talk about this at length at the study meeting, but I, I'm not sure if we can pass number eight without number seven.
Councilmember Jolly, would you like to remove both seven and eight?
Let's do it, thank you.
Councilmember McCully is in agreement with that. So we will, we will remove seven and eight from the consent agenda. All right, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Vice President Barr. Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on the consent, consent agenda, which are now items one through six? And if I'm correct, nine through 15. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes. Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Vice President Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
President McIntyre. Aye. And so the consent agenda is, is, is approved without, with, with items except for seven and with the exception of seven and eight, which will now be moved to the regular agenda. So at this time, I'm going to ask, it's been a long time since we pulled something from the consent agenda at the meeting. Mr. Burner, should we go to these items next or at the end of the agenda?
I, you know, I think council could do it either way, but I think you can do it right now if you wanted to.
Okay, that, that would be my, that would be my preference if we're in compliance.
Madam President, can I offer an approving for number seven?
Yes, we have support. Support from Councilmember Toy. Council, does anyone, would anyone like to comment on this before I, I go to the mayor? All right, Mayor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. And I apologize, counsel, if this has created any undue confusion. I just really wanted to give you all a chance to take a bit of a victory lap here. What we have before us now is the third step in a process that we all began very committed to over a year ago in settling our collective bargaining agreements with our three public safety unions. And starting with our Livonia firefighters, we moved on to our Livonia Police Officers Association and now our command officers. We've pursued new contracts that have continued to emphasize how vital public safety is to our community and the strength of our community. We all know that it is getting increasingly difficult to recruit and retain police officers and firefighters. And both of these departments have faced severe shortages in the past years. But with your vote tonight now, we bring all three contracts into a condition where they are amazingly competitive. And we are really in a position to be able to address that shortage that has plagued our community for a number of years. That also got stressed recently with COVID. It's bringing additional stress and strain to departments across the country, both police and fire departments. So I want to acknowledge the work that you've done in getting us to this point. I want to acknowledge the work that our department heads have done in getting us to this point. And most especially to our unions who came to the table, really working hard, wanting to negotiate something that was going to help us recruit and retain the very best police officers and firefighters, knowing that we are in an amazingly competitive environment right now. So what you have before you now is the third leg of that three-legged stool, a very competitive and fair contract. And I've appreciated your support through the course of all of this. And I just wanted to take a moment to recognize the hard work that's gone and gotten us to this stage tonight. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, anyone from the audience wish to comment? All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, if you would please take the vote on the approval of item number, agenda item number eight, which is going to be removed from the consent agenda. Seven. This is item number seven. I'm sorry, seven. Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Vice President Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
President McIntyre. Aye, and the, the resolution carries. And I should have, when we removed that, I should have gone back and read the official title of the, of the agenda item. And, and I'm doing so post facto. That was a request to approve the Livonia Command Officer salary and benefit changes. Came to us originally from the Civil Service Department for the period of December 1st, 2020 through November 30th, 2023. And now we will go to item number eight, agenda item number eight. And this is a request to approve the Livonia Police Officers Association of Michigan, POAM, on behalf of its affiliate, the Livonia Police Officers Association Police Service Aid Unit, Unit B Tentative Agreement. This also came to us from the Civil Service Department for the period through November 30th, 2023. Councilmember Toy.
Thank you. I would like to move that, Madam Chair, approving.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Jolly. Any discussion? Okay. Councilmember Jolly.
Madam President, I'll just point out with these two motions back to back, these two items here, it really reflects the very long experienced members of the police department and those who we hope to become long experienced members of the police department in the near future here. So it's good to have our, our entire bases covered here and to show we appreciate the entire force from the very beginning of their career all the way through to the end. I know a lot of us have had an opportunity to work with a lot of these people who are represented, particularly in number seven. And I'll just say that, you know, the professionalism and the amount of experience that is represented by this particular group is really second to none, not only in Metro Detroit, but across probably the nation. So I'll just give a quick shout out and a thank you for everything that they do for us on a regular basis. Thank you.
I thank you, Councilmember Jolly. Anyone else? Anyone from the audience? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, would you please take the roll call vote on agenda item number eight? Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Vice President Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
President McIntyre. Aye, and the item and the resolution are approved unanimously. So thank you. All right, with that, we move on with unfinished business, meetings of the committee, beginning with item number 16. And that is a report out on Committee of the Whole Meeting of February 17th, 2021. The subject matter of this was an agreement with Higera, Higera Health to provide two full-time master degree level professional social workers to be embedded with the Livonia Police Department to provide law enforcement, mental health, co-response services to the residents of the city of Livonia. And this was Council Resolution 21-21. And I did mention that we have new data on this that I would refer to specifically. The new data is an item of, from the Human Relations Commission of Livonia to the City Council, letter of support. It is respectfully suggested that a communication received from the Livonia Human Relations Committee, Commission dated March 1st, 2021, voicing its support for the crisis support team program with respect to this item be received and placed on file for the information of the council. Councilmember Jolly.
I'll offer an approving resolution, Madam President.
Anyone? Support from Councilmember McCullough. Councilmember Toy.
Chair, I'm forgetting, on this contract, do we have a time? How long is a contract, if I may maybe ask Mr. Burner? In line or maybe Mr. Jolly?
I, ma'am.
Ma'am.
I'm, I'm going to go to Vice President Barr, his, his hand up. Vice President Barr. And, and I'd also like, I'll go, I'd like to go to Chief Cade after Vice President Barr.
Okay, well, I do have a comment later, but the answer to that question is that we can, with 30 days' notice, we can back out of it anytime. There's no lock, long-term locking.
Well, there's no sunset or anything like that, right?
With 30 days' notice, we can.
Correct, I heard you, but I mean, okay.
All right. I, I do believe the point was made by the chief in the committee meeting. And in this, that, that this, you know, that this is intended, this is intended to see how it goes. That's why there's 30 days. Perfect. I don't think the chief is still with us. Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, Madam President. It's, it's nice to finally see this in front of us for a vote. Again, I will echo, and I know the new information from the Human Relations Commission. Thank you guys for that note. Appreciate the support on this. I'm hoping, I'm, I'm, like I said, I'm glad we have this in front of us. I think that especially with the pandemic, the, the number of cases are on the rise for this type of social support that is needed. I think it's an incredible step forward for an innovation and being trailblazing. And I'm glad it's here. So thanks for everybody involved.
All right, and I'm going to go to the chief. And then I should have given a readout from the, from the committee meeting, which I will do after I go to the chief. Chief?
Thank you, Madam President, members of council. This is just to confirm that this is a, a month-to-month basically agreement. So at any time that either our end or at Higera's end, we can pull out of it if it's not working. So there's no long-term commitment. This is, is indicated in an effort to really address the needs of the community. And it's a, it's a, it's a trial basis. We'll see how it goes. And I'm very optimistic that we're going to have success with this. We also wouldn't be before this body at this point. So, but again, we'll see how it goes. It's month-to-month, there's, there's no long-term commitment. We're also looking for opportunity for grant funds to help address those issues. And I'm optimistic that we'll have success with that as well. But I want to thank the mayor and this council for their support, for your support in this issue. I'm confident that this is going to be a win-win for our officers and for the community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And before I go to Councilmember Donavich, I'd just like to thank you for your work on this. I, I know you've been working on this for a long time, I think at least two years. So there's been a tremendous amount of work done by you and others who have laid the groundwork for this. Councilmember Donavich.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to make a comment. First off, in regards to Livonia Police Officers, some of the most professional, well-trained officers in the state, if not the country, I do believe that they are perfectly capable of handling any scenario or situation that they have to deal with while carrying out their duties on a daily basis. I do have concerns about this, but speaking to Chief Cade, which has been an awesome resource and a very hard worker for our city and our department, thank you for answering some of my questions and talking to some officers and some residents. I do have concerns, but I, I'm willing to look into this and support it. And it is essentially a trial basis. And maybe it does become one of the better programs in the state. And if we can save one life in our city and, and help an officer, I do think it'll be a worthwhile program. Ultimately, I want to make sure that our police officers are safe, the residents that they deal with are safe, and the social workers are safe because it is a job that can change in a blink of an eye. So I, I look forward to seeing this program work. And hats off to the officers who deal with these situations every day. And I hope this does bring some relief to you. But at the end of the day, Livonia officers, you are the subject matter expert and some of the most professional officers. So thanks for what you do. And thanks to everyone that made this.
Thank you, Councilmember Donavich. I'm going to go to my brief readout on the Committee of the Whole Meeting, which was held February 17th. That was held virtually via Zoom. We had all members of the committee, which Committee of the Whole is composed of all seven members of the City Council. We also had the mayor with us, Chief Cade, Chief of Police, Thomas Sperrowsky, Livonia Police Department Captain, Sergeant Eric Markop from Livonia Police Department, Officer Anthony Hall from Livonia Police Department, Linda Shield, our City Treasurer, Leo Neville, our Assistant City Attorney, Dave Varga, Director of Administrative Services, Lashawn Thomas, Director of Government Affairs, Josh Sable, the Director of Communications, the Honorable Timothy M. Kenny, Chief Judge of the Third Circuit of Wayne County, the Honorable Judge Wayne County, Carol Zuniga from Higera, Jamie White from Higera, Arnold Wicker from the Wayne, Detroit Wayne Integrated Health Network, Nancy Hambricht from Wayne State University. And we have many other, we had a lot, like I think about 15 or 20 members of the audience who had joined us and they all registered through Zoom. And we had a presentation that was given regarding the key elements of the program, again, reviewed by Chief Cade. We had a research recap provided by Wayne State University and a presentation given by Higera Health that they had not had an opportunity to give at the regular meeting. And we had a great opportunity for questions and comments. And the approving resolution was. was offered by Councilmember Jolly, and out of the committee came a recommendation for adoption of a resolution approving the agreement with Higera Health to provide law enforcement, mental health, co-response services to the residents of the city of LaLonee, and we also moved this out of committee. All right, Vice President Barr.
Thanks, Madam President. So as I voiced at our committee meeting, I intend to support this and many of the reasons why have already been mentioned. I just want to address two specific issues, just based on a lot of questions. I have gotten a lot of questions on this topic over the last three to four weeks. And two things I want to make very clear. Number one, this does not replace any police officers. The number of police officers is not going down. This is adding specialized resources to our department to help our officers do what they do better. So that's one thing I just want to make very clear. The second thing, that leads to the second point, which is, well, if you're adding this, then there's a fear about, with some of the actions we've taken recently, is there going to be tax increases? First of all, this is coming, as has been mentioned, this is coming from budgeted funds. Now, when I say budgeted funds, that's not to say it was budgeted for this, that's from police budgeted funds, so there are trade-offs with this. I mean, there's no question that by spending this money, there's something else that money won't get spent on, probably some capital expenditures or whatever, and that's for the administration to figure that out. But there are no tax increases tied to this, and just for residents in general, it's probably a good time to remind people that no tax increases can happen without your direct approval anyway. So it's not like council could do something like this and then smuggle in a tax increase. So I just want to put those two things to rest. We still have every intention of a fully-staffed police department, there's no tax increase associated with this, and as has already been mentioned, it's something that if it's not working, we can back out at any time. So, thanks, Madam President.
Thank you, Vice President Barr. Anyone else from the council before I go to our audience? Would anyone in the audience like to comment on this agenda item before we take it, before we vote upon it? Calling once, calling twice, last call for audience comment on this item. All right, Madam Clerk, would you please take the roll call vote on the Committee of the, of Item 16, which is to, which is to embed, excuse me, I'm sorry, to create an agreement, enter into an agreement with Higera Health to provide two full-time, master degree level professional social workers to be embedded with the LaLonee Police Department?
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Vice President Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
President McIntyre.
Aye, and the motion carries unanimously, and we will move ahead with that program. Thank you. Continuing with unfinished business, item number 17 is a proposed amendment to the LaLonee Code of Ordinances as amended. This comes to us from the Department of Law to amend the Sewage Disposal System Ordinance, Chapter 13.20, Section 050, connection rates for buildings fee schedule, and Section 060, connection rate for buildings computation guidelines. Council. Councilmember Jolly.
I'll offer an approving, Madam President.
Support.
Support, was that Councilmember Donavick? Thank you. Discussion?
It's actually up for a first, would be for a first reading.
Oh, I'm, thank you, Mr. Burnier. This will not be a roll call vote, first reading. So, Mr. Jolly, you're offering first reading.
I will, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Donavick. All right, so we have a first reading offered by Councilmember Jolly. Any comment? Anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number 18, we'll move on to new business, beginning with Agenda Item Number 18. This is an acceptance of grant of easement. This comes to us from the Department of Law secured without monetary consideration from Schoolcraft College and Main Campus for the public utility easement in connection with the water main constructed at 18600 Hagerty Road in the northwest quarter of Section 7. It's parcel ID 46-027-99-0001-003.
Madam President.
Yes, Council, Vice President Barr.
I'll offer an approving.
Support, support from Councilmember Toy? Any discussion? I see that, number White, you had your, you had your hand up? Okay. Would anyone from the audience like to comment on this item? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, would you please take the roll call vote?
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Vice President Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
President McIntyre.
Aye, and the motion carries unanimously, and the grant of easement is accepted. Number 19 is also an acceptance of grant of easement, coming to us from the Department of Law secured without monetary consideration from Schoolcraft College, the Health Sciences property, for public utility easement in connection with the water main constructed at 18600 Hagerty Road in the northwest quarter of Section 7. This is parcel ID 46-7-99-0001-003. Council. Support, support from Councilmember Toy. Council, any discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to comment on this agenda item? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, would you please take the, call the vote on this item, item number 19?
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Vice President Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
President McIntyre.
Aye, and that motion carries unanimously as well, and we accepted the grant of easement. At this time, we go back to our audience. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to communicate with the council, who has not already communicated with the council this evening, on any item not on this evening's agenda, now is an opportunity to do so. Seeing none. Councilmember Donavick.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to know if I could request a report from the administration. I have recently had some questions about the senior center and with the state's new, with amending the COVID restrictions, if the capacity of the senior center will be increased, if it will be open, if programs will resume, and just a question.
All right.
Thank you, Madam President.
Are you, are you offering a, are you offering a motion?
If that, if that would be the proper action here, yes, that would be.
That would be the proper action. Councilmember Toy, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, but it's on another manner, I'm sorry.
Okay, would anyone like to support?
Madam President?
Yes.
Never mind, I'm thinking about it.
I'll support for sake of discussion.
Okay. All right, discussion.
Madam President.
Just a minute, Councilmember Donavick. Councilmember Jolly, did you wish to comment?
Yeah, I, I do, just very quickly here. I just want to put on the record here that I trusted the administration and the people that we have been congratulating throughout this meeting for their good work here, are continuing to evaluate on an ongoing basis what is allowed and what is not allowed pursuant to the state orders. So I guess I come into this understanding that there is a desire to expand the services that we are providing as a city, to expand access to certain facilities. But my understanding is that it is an ongoing discussion, and we are absolutely, number one, following guidelines, but providing all the services that we can under those guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jolly.
Thanks, Madam Chair. If it does help at all, the last update to any standards that have been changed by the Department of Health and Human Services was provided to the council on Friday. You know, as new executive orders or as executive orders are changed and directives from Department of Health and Human Services are rolled back, that gives us an opportunity as a community to roll back some of what we've done in terms of building closures and, you know, shutting down services and things like that. We have, as a city, a plan in place that closed down operations, and we also have each department head looking at any time there's an opportunity to reopen those opportunities. They have to present a plan to our Director of Emergency Preparedness, and then to the Law Department as well. And then, once those plans are reviewed, then, and, you know, they meet all of the standards that have been set by the state of Michigan, then opportunities open up again for our residents to participate in more services, or buildings to reopen at greater capacity, whatever the change is. We are really trying to do our best to keep council apprised when those changes do come about. We hope that the last round of changes was clearly delineated in that March 5 memo to you, and we'll continue to do things like that. So, you know, if you need something more than that, by all means, please let me know what that is, and I'm happy to work with you. But these are directives that are changing on a daily basis, and I don't think that you're going to want to wait for a resolution to pass in order to get a response from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Donavick.
Thank you, Madam President, and to Councilmember Jolly and the mayor. I wasn't necessarily looking for a formal thing, that's why I was kind of taken off guard by making a motion. I just, basically what the mayor had just explained, I had received a few questions, and as our seniors are most vulnerable, it was some of that I just wanted to ask about and inquire about. So thank you, Madam Mayor, for giving me exactly what I was hoping for, and, Madam President, for your help, appreciate it. I'd like to remove my motion.
You pardon me?
I'd like to remove the motion.
You're going to withdraw your motion?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
All right, and Mr. Burnier, again, I need to call on you. Mr. Barr does not need, Vice President Barr does not need to take any action, correct? All right, thank you, Councilmember Donavick, and I do see that we have someone who would like to.
What happened?
Councilmember Toy, I don't think we're hearing you.
Oh, did you recognize me? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Just a couple of things, Madam Chair. I would like to offer a resolution to invite the LaLonee School Board and the superintendent and to the City Council to go over their milledge and get some unanswered questions and answered questions, you know, and whoever else would like to join us. We've done this before, and it's been real helpful. They're asking for, I believe it's a bond renewal beginning of May, and I think it would behoove us to have them. So that was kind of a resolution I'd like to put forward, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are you offering that for committee, committee of the whole?
Yeah. Committee of the whole, I think would be appropriate.
All right, so Councilmember Toy is offering for the, if I understand this correctly, to rephrase, the School Board and the administration to come in, and of course, the City Council has no direct role in this, but to educate us.
Right.
To educate us and help us understand it, just our role as elected leaders in the city and getting out questions about it.
We've done it before, and when we do it as a group, everybody's hearing the same thought.
Yep. And of course, those meetings are open to the public, and so anyone from the public is welcome to participate and listen to. Do we have support?
Support.
Support from Councilmember Jolly. Any discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on Councilmember Toy's resolution for, it's supported by Councilmember Jolly, for Committee of the Whole Meeting with the purpose of educational session and discussion on the bond renewal with the LaLonee School Board and administration?
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Vice President Barr, Vice President Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
President McIntyre.
Aye, thank you, and the motion carries. We will look to get that meeting scheduled as soon as possible. Councilmember Toy.
Thank you. Just one last thing, and I was remiss from mentioning this in the opening of the meeting. A very dear person has passed on in our state, the Honorable Frank K. Kelly. Frank was one of our first Attorney Generals after my uncle, who was Ariestoy, who was an Attorney General, not when Lincoln was shot, but way back then. And Frank was, was an excellent attorney. He really specialized, when he was AG, in consumer protection, which was one of his real landmarks, and also environmental protection, which is near and dear to my heart, as well as, I know that Attorney General Kelly, he survived by his three children. He served under Governor John Swanson, George Romney, William Millican, and Jim Blanchard. He was 96 years old when he passed, and we wish him and his family our deepest condolences, and God bless, such a great public servant. Even though he was on the other side of the aisle, doesn't matter, he did a wonderful job for our state, and that's what it's all about, getting along with each other and making good things happen, and he certainly did when it came to the environment and it came to consumer protection and a lot of other things. Very outspoken, just loved him for that, and just a great man. And I'd like to just request just a couple minutes to remember our Attorney General, longest-serving one, Frank Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Chair, God bless. Thank you. All right, at this time, we go back to audience communication. I see we have Carissa with Cozy Care Pet Services, and good evening, and if you would please give us your full name and your address. Good evening.
Good evening, yes, I'm Carissa Perrin, and my address is 7701 Randy Drive, Westland, Port, Michigan, 48185. And I'm here to just express the urgency of both the Beagles and other pets being left out in extreme temperatures. I know it's been cold, and, you know, the temperatures may drop back down again, but we're also concerned about the heat, and we just really want to express the urgency. We're working on a petition to send to Ms. Mayor Maureen Miller, and also the senators and representatives and the councils, but we just want to express that urgency and just see what the status is on this matter.
Thank you. I don't know if you were on earlier, but I gave a full explanation that this has been referred to the Law Department to draft an ordinance to come back to council. They, they're short-staffed right now, they have a lot of ordinances and a lot of work to do, and they are working on it diligently. So it will come back to the City Council, so, you know, you can subscribe to our agendas and watch for it to come back to, to a meeting.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for taking the time to call in. Last call for audience communication, going once, twice, three times, and with that, council, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Support.
Okay, Toy and Jolly, and I think we can safely show seven on that, and we will adjourn as of 28, and we will reconvene for the study meeting at 8:35. Thank you. Good night. Mayor, thank you.